Go on. We now have microphones, so I don't need to speak so loudly. But again, welcome. Good to see all our law enforcement and first responders here. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So we're starting out with Listen and Learn with Dr. Carrie Brown. Dr. Brown?
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's always a pleasure to be here. It's nice to see everyone. I understand you have a very compressed schedule, so we'll move along pretty quickly. At the beginning of the year, the county auditor's office was talking a lot about their values, updating our strategic plan, and a question that continued to arise was, why do we do what we do? Why do we do what we do? So we think about those personal why statements, the kinds of things that motivate you internally, but we also wanted to focus on the why from the collective. Because we know from research that the more that you have unity in your purpose, the more effective, the more productive, and the more engaged your employees are. So why do we do what we do? So we're pretty commonly aware of how we serve, connect, and protect. And we think about the ways that as county auditor that we're focused on financial reporting, payroll, settlement and tax, the licensing programs as an arm of the Department of Taxation, as well as real estate assessment, conveyance of property, mapping, and GIS. We have a lot of clarity upon our mission-related focus in the things that we do. But over time, we developed a code, a code of ethics that relates to three different principles, and then that culminated in the collective why. The first principle was people first. People first. We serve the public and support the public interest. Now, as we think about that, we think about our citizens, taxpayers, customers, employees, employers, the business sector, nonprofit sector, and all the kinds of services that we provide that are facing outward. We think about the values of being trustworthy, accountable, open, and transparent, treating all with respect, and thinking about that best team possible. So that's evidenced in things like the thousand informal hearings that we hold, or the RE Summit that was held last week, education and outreach videos that have been replicated across the state, and responsiveness in all divisions. So people first, the first principle. The second principle was maintaining standards of professionalism and integrity. So we engage with the highest standards of professionalism and integrity. As we think about those sorts of values, you think about credibility, skill, judgment, quality of services, diligence, dignity, respect, everything that you'd like to see in your county government. It's manifested in terms of targets for electronic services as we think about how we have the conveyances that are transferred more than 75% electronically now to improve the accuracy as well as improving the convenience. New technology and website tools. This past week, with realtors and lenders and those that attended our summit, the website tools were considered to be a very positive thing. And encouraging training and certifications. A hundred percent of the auditor's office has a certification, and we have ongoing training. And one of the ones that we're celebrating today is with Carter, who has received his state certification with the weights and measures. We also have new technology, new online tools. Just this past month, we introduced the way that you can online have your address changed and more than 250 immediately use that particular online tool. So then our third principle is remaining objective. Objective and carrying out those responsibilities. So we think about your problem-solving efforts, data management, disclosing appropriate parties and related relationships, that zero tolerance for fraud, open discussion about ethics. That's the third principle. And that's manifested in the Board of Revision, Budget Commission, Internal Control Manual, work we do for procedures for assessment and data evaluation, even things that we use it as a lens to look at new legislation. One legislation might not have as much objectivity as we'd like to see when it comes to data management, so that might not be something we would support as much as legislation that had more objectivity. So with this lens and those three very important principles, people first, professional integrity, and objectivity, we came to our ultimate why of what we exist. We provide leadership with essential financial reporting and data management services to improve accountability, trustworthiness, credibility in both the private and public sectors. Very positive way to think about that collective why. It's been lifting the staff. They've been able to put their own personal why statement along with it, and it has been a very helpful way to measure our work on an ongoing basis. So we share that with you now. We're about to add that to our strategic plan. As we think about the private sector, one of the main ways that we are able to support the private sector and engage with the private sector is with our Waits and Measures program. There's a great deal of compliance to that, and it's more than just following the rules. It's being able to make sure that people are getting what they pay for, and also that the businesses are getting what they deserve for what they're selling. So we have with us, I think Carter is in the back there, and that's one of the honorees that we have today with the fact that within a very short period of time, Carter has received certification from the state of Ohio as a Waits and Measures Inspector. So we want to celebrate that, and we do have the proclamation that you had last week. And when we are concluded with our next portion of our program, we'd like to have a picture with Carter. And now the next portion, if you have any questions, we'll move right into it.
Okay. The first thing you mentioned was people first. I love that. That's so important.
Thank you. We do have this all on one page, which will be in our strategic plan, which I believe is in front of you all. We have extra copies for those who are interested. We do appreciate feedback about that. Now, we have some ways to share some fun facts with Waits and Measures and other parts of the county auditor's office. We have nine Fairfield County squares, and we have two contestants that are going to play Fairfield County Squares. Our two contestants today are Jeff Fix and Dave Levesey. They are both commissioners for that fine county of Fairfield County. Let's get to know them a little bit better. Dave Levesey, I understand you live in Miller'sport with your wife Ann, and you like Buckeye Lake. Tell us a little bit about that.
So, you know.
We're really doing this.
So there's not enough time to tell everything I love about Buckeye Lake, but I love Buckeye Lake.
That's just great. Our next contestant is Jeff Fix, also commissioner from Fairfield County, Ohio. I understand that you're deeply engaged in multiple associations, the County Commissioners Association, as well as the Restaurant Association. What do you like about those associations?
I like the opportunity to represent Fairfield County in, you know, trying to influence the way our state legislature treats us. There's a county, but all of us as counties.
That's just terrific. Now, we have nine Hollywood squares. Hollywood squares right here in Fairfield County. Just come on down, and then Rachel has some volunteers and put them out.
We do. We have JFS Director Cory Clark. Utilities Director Tony Vogel.
Prosecutor Amy Brown.
Thompson, Recorder. Yes, you need a chair, sorry. Recorder McKenzie. We have Bev Anders was requested to be a square.
You requested it.
Carter will be playing, and we have Heidi Hamilton, our newest transfer. It's Hamilton, right? Yeah, okay. Our newest transfer clerk in Array of Sunshine at our real estate office. And who am I missing? That's six. You guys can come on down. Rick is in here. He was supposed to be our center.
Come on down. We need three more volunteers that'll serve as a Hollywood square. You do not need to know the answer to any question.
Chair, do you like to be a square?
I am.
You are a square. You like to go. I think you're a good center square. You're a good center square.
Really appealing. Let's.
Yep, you can grab Carrie's chair. We need to be in a square, please, guys.
Go with the music story.
This row is really good. Okay, we have Austin Lines is a square, and one more square in the audience, please. You just have to, you have to be right, Garrett.
I sat with you at dinner last night, and now we're.
Okay, so the rules of the game is tic-tac-toe. It's a quick game. And in toss, Dave Levesey won that toss. You get to.
I don't need you.
We're glad to hear you. Glad to hear you.
Please bring them. You can play next year.
Just choose a square, and then you get an X or an O.
And for our participants or squares, your answer will be true. It can be false. It's up to our contestants to determine if it's true or false.
I choose Alex Flay.
And there is a secret square.
So once, if you have been selected or your square is done, please just hold up the X or the O so that we know.
And Alex is the secret square, so you get an extra special prize if you get this one correct. Here's the question. Which president is considered the father of Waits and Measures? Chair?
Franklin Pierce.
Sheriff answers Franklin Pierce. Do you agree with that? Well, you would be correct, and the O gets the square and the special prize. The president that is considered the father of Waits and Measures is John Quincy Adams. You get to pick a square. All right, Austin. Austin, what was originally defined is an area of a land where a pair of oxen could plow it in one day. Austin says an acre. Do you agree?
I agree.
That is correct. O gets the square. You get to choose another.
Cory.
Cory. When was Fairfield County formed into a separate political subdivision?
1893.
The answer is 1893, a confident 1893.
Disagree.
You are correct. You are correct. December 1800, and Commissioner Levesey wins.
Thanks to you for kidding me.
We have like 45 different questions, but we know you have a time. Just wanted to give you a flavor, some fun things that we do, and have some fun facts about Waits and Measures. We appreciate your time. Thanks to all your good sports, your good sports.
Yeah, maybe next year we'll get to play. It'd be great.
That was fun.
That was, I know. That is not how it went when we watched it on TV.
On TV, they got a lot of wrong answers.
Some things they probably can't say on TV.
Rachel didn't know who Paul Lynn was. Born in Ohio, buried in Ohio.
So thank you to all the.
We need to.
The players.
Picture with Carter whenever they send you off.
Yeah, let's do that picture with Carter.
Come on, Carter.
I'll tell you.
The quote from President John Quincy.
Dr. Brown, you're telling them. But thank you, Dr. Brown. That was fun. So we go into this portion of our mating public comment. If you wish to do so, please step up to the mic, give your name and address, and we will restrict it to three minutes because of our schedule today. Anyone who would like to make public comment. But thank you all for coming. So we're gonna, we're gonna change our. Schedule around a little bit. We're gonna do the proclamations now. So you folks who need to get back to work or are able to do so. So I'm gonna have Commissioner Fix read the proclamation.
All right, so this is the proclamation recognizing national first responders. All you first responders, the Lexicon up here, while we read the proclamation. And I'll read it while you are all coming up here. Proclamation recognizing October 28, 2003 as National First Responders Day. Whereas on National First Responders Day, we honor the bravery of our nation's heroes who put their lives on the line each and every day. Law enforcement officers who keep our streets safe, and firefighters who rush into burning buildings, to relief workers who care for our families after natural disasters, and dispatchers who assess emergencies, to EMTs, paramedics, and other public health workers who provide life-saving emergency care at moments' notice. When Trac-1 strikes, these individuals are always there to help us. We thank them for their extraordinary service to our country, and especially to Fairfield County. We ask more of our first responders today than ever before. From crime and illegal drug use to weather calamities and planet-wide pandemics, first responders are stretched thin, yet their courage and commitment to service never wavers. And our first responders remain on alert and on call, always there when needed. We celebrate those who have answered the call of duty. We also honor the memory of those heroes we have lost. Let us renew our commitment as a nation and as a county to stand by these heroes and their families that are shaping stronger, safer, and more resilient communities. Now, therefore, the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners does hereby formally declare its respect and recognition of October 28, 2003 as National First Responders Day throughout Fairfield County. We urge all residents to show appreciation, consideration, and respect to our first responders on this day and every day. Yeah, there's an awful lot of you up here. Where's Sheriff Flay?
I'm ready.
On behalf of all your fellow first responders, and guys, we're gonna need you all to squeeze it real tight, like you like me to. That wasn't our purpose. Okay, yeah, there are.
So I think what's important to note, you know, we hear nicely about the anti-law enforcement rhetoric, but that doesn't happen here in Fairfield County. We're a hundred percent behind law enforcement, and each and every one of us appreciate you and so serve.
We'll do two. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right, thank you all very much.
You want to thank you? Yes, thank you so much.
They are, they're different. Keith, we're gonna have to have some comments together. Yeah, one about domestic violence. We have folks from the Lighthouse here, Susan. Can I get that one?
Yes.
So this is a proclamation recognizing October's Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Those domestic violence is a crime and includes physical assault, sexual abuse, stalking, and emotional, psychological, spiritual, and financial abuse. And domestic violence remains a pervasive issue across Fairfield County, the United States, and the world with implications for personal and community health. Domestic violence does not discriminate, touches all communities regardless of age, race, disability, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And research shows that by creating communities where people are connected, supportive, and caring, it can reduce incidence of domestic violence. Every day in Fairfield County, individuals and organizations such as the Lighthouse play a part in supporting people impacted by domestic violence. Information about services can be found at www.lancasterlh.org. Now, therefore, the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners does hereby formally declare its respect and recognition of October. As Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we urge all Fairfield County residents to become involved in efforts to prevent and respond to domestic violence and recognize the impact of domestic violence in our community. Thank you all for being here today. Did you wanna? Yes, did you wanna say a word?
Um, just thank you for recognizing this. It is, as you said, something that's not discriminated against. You know, we, I don't have our exact numbers with me, but, you know, even just in our core advocacy department, we served well over 1,200 individuals in this little year of 2002. So, you know. Definitely an issue there, and it's pervasive, and we appreciate all of you guys.
And I'm sure the sheriff would attest to this. It's a terrible thing that happens many times. I experienced this when I was on the fire service. And so, yeah, this is a great place where some of these folks can go, receive protection. Thank you for what you do.
Scoot in, everybody. All right, thank you all very much. All right, Dave Gallimore from Midwest Fabricating. If you'd come up to receive a proclamation recognizing October's Manufacturing Month. For us, there are over 4,000 manufacturing jobs located in Fairfield County, which account for approximately 10% of all jobs in the county. And Manufacturing Month celebrates and recognizes U.S. manufacturers in the global and local marketplace. And Manufacturing Month celebrates modern manufacturing and positively influences the common misconceptions around the manufacturing industry while inspiring future generations of manufacturers. And Fairfield County would like to highlight Midwest Fabricating as one of its many valued manufacturing companies. Now, therefore, the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners does hereby formally declare October as Manufacturing Month throughout Fairfield County. And the Board of Commissioners express their appreciation for all manufacturing businesses and personality. Would you like to say a word for the?
Um, we just thank you, the Commissioners, and everybody from the county. Midwest has been around for 77 years now, and we look forward to the support from the county and look forward to giving opportunities to, you know, residents of the county and outside the county. But we just look forward to growing within the county with your support. I deserve to stand.
Thank you.
Midwest has been a terrific partner, especially with the county and in our workforce center, and we appreciate all your cooperation.
Yep, thank you.
One, excuse me. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you. All right. All right, Leanne Adams from the Dog Shelter. Proclamation recognizing October as Adopt a Shelter Dog Month. I've done this twice. I can tell you it's amazing. Whereas the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals promotes October as Adopt a Shelter Dog Month. And the mission of Fairfield County Dog Adoption Center and Shelter encompasses safety, compassion, innovation, and integrity with excellence, excellent service for both the animals and individuals. And there are currently shelter dogs in need of a safe and loving home. Now, therefore, the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners does hereby formally declare its respect and recognition of October as Adopt a Shelter Dog Month throughout Fairfield County. We urge all residents to consider adoption of a shelter dog and to contact the Fairfield County Dog Adoption Center and Shelter. So my own personal story is that years ago, we adopted a dog named Nikki who had been in the shelter, I want to say for four and a half months. And she has been a tremendous blessing to Liz and I. And then just over a year ago, we adopted another half pit bull, something else mix. Her name was Violet in the shelter, but because we live in Violet township, we thought that would be weird. So we changed her name to Birdie, short for Bertha or Roberta or whatever. Birdie is the sweetest dog we've ever had. I can't imagine that everybody's as lucky as we've been, but maybe they are. And these shelter dogs just need some love and need a home, and it's a great way to add to your family. So I encourage everybody to do something like that. Thank you for everything you do at the Dog Shelter. You want to say?
We just thank the Commissioners for their support.
Okay, short and sweet.
Leanne's done a terrific job within the short time that you've been there, and we expect bigger, better things in the future.
Thank you.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay, Recorder's Office, Lisa McKenzie, Lori Kennedy, Shelly Martin, and Phil's Choirs. If you would come up.
More than home.
This is a proclamation recognizing October as National Customer Service. Sorry, second through the sixth, as National Customer Service Week. We take pride in all of our departments in Fairfield County and the customer service we provide. You just heard Dr. Brown talk about customer service in the auditor's office. We're highlighting this group, but we thank all of our county employees for their customer service. So whereas Customer Service Week, the celebration of the importance of customer service and the people who serve and support customers on a daily basis. Since its beginnings, National Customer Service Week has been embraced by organizations that recognize the value of service and the contributions of their frontline teams, and agree to customer service as a critical tool for any organization, especially in today's challenging business environment. And whereas the Fairfield County Recorder's Office is successful in displaying a strong commitment to customer satisfaction, now, therefore, the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners does hereby formally declare October 2nd through the 6th, 2003, as National Customer Service Week. Fairfield County Board of Commissioners express their appreciation of the Fairfield County Recorder's Office and all who are committed to providing exceptional customer service. Very much. Thank you. So really, to all of our county employees, we really do appreciate everything we do.
So Lisa's done a terrific job bringing Recorder's Office into the 21st century, so thank you, Lisa.
Thank you very much.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Lisa, did you want to?
I just want to say I'm so thankful to have such a wonderful staff. They not only work individually, but they work collectively to provide some of the best customer service. We get comments quite often from folks, and like I said a few weeks ago, I was specifically seeked out by individuals who had been in the office or had made phone calls and wanted to let us know that these fine folks here are going above and beyond every day. So we just really appreciate it. Thank you.
Last one, Dan Neely and Brian from Long Island. This proclamation recognizing October's Cybersecurity Awareness Month. The Fairfield County Board of Commissioners recognizes that it plays a vital role in identifying and protecting its citizens from and responding to cybersecurity threats that may have significant impact on our individual and collective safety and privacy. Cybersecurity education and awareness are crucial for everyone, including large corporations, small businesses, financial institutions, schools, government agencies, the home user, and anyone who connects to the internet, be it with a computer, mobile phone, or other device. And monitoring your accounts, being conscientious of what you share online, keeping computer software up to date, creating unique passwords and changing them regularly, installing antivirus programs and firewalls, and using the internet-connected devices safely are ways people and organizations can protect themselves from phishing, viruses, ransomware, and other types of malware. Now, therefore, the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners does hereby formally declare its respect and recognition of October as Cybersecurity Awareness Month throughout Fairfield County. So just this past weekend, I did the three training modules that I was supposed to do on cyber. I know, I'm a little bit ahead, Dan. Don't fall over. So anyway. It's, you know, it's a little tedious, but it kind of does open up your eyes to some of the newer ways that people are trying to break into your computers and maybe recognize that I need to change a couple of small things in the way I'm doing it. But cybersecurity is a big deal. We had talked in the County Commission Association about one of the counties that got hacked not too long ago. It can do some real damage, so we appreciate all that you guys do to keep us safe here and hope all of our county employees do the same. Thanks. Did you want to say something, Dan?
Uh, our team, a few members of our team participated in a cybersecurity simulation, also through the National Association of Counties, a couple weeks. weeks ago in September. Uh, we're looking at, uh, having some county leadership, uh, participate in, uh, similar sort of roundtable activity, uh, so that we can be as prepared as we can be. Um, and you know, sort of along the lines of, uh, Lisa mentioning her staff. Um, man, you know, when, when our staff are made aware of a situation, a potential exploit, uh, something that, you know, we didn't even realize that we have an opportunity to, um, plug a hole, uh, they, they're right on it and are actively, you know, uh, doing those, uh, sort of remediation efforts. So I can't thank them enough.
And you know, cyber breach can be brutal. Uh, it's witnessed by Licking County here back a few years ago. It took months to recover. So thank you, Dan, and your staff for all you do.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Thanks, guys.
Ready. Well, thank you. Anything on legal? Okay.
All right. American Rescue Plan update from the 30.6 received. 28.5 has been appropriated and 15.4 expanded and 4.4 encumbered or obligated. And we'll talk a little bit more about a few resolutions we have on for today. Um, this year, we will be celebrating the 173rd Annual Fairfield County Fair. Um, the grand opening will be Monday, October the 9th at 8:00 a.m. at the Feeder Creek Show Arena. So this is the area where they held the opening last year. It helps them get moving on to their next event, uh, for the fair. So they're appreciative of, uh, the county's support, especially the Commissioners, um, and are inviting everyone to participate and attend in that event. And I believe Commissioner Davis will be saying a few opening remarks for that.
So I know on October 10th, we have budget hearings. I'm just hoping they can be done by about 2:45. I need to get over there for the mule races, cause that is the most entertaining part.
Are you on?
I'm not going to be on one of the mules.
I'd go if you were.
We may have to do that someday, Dan.
I'm looking to see here. We, we might have to move a few things.
I do love the mule races, but budget hearings are more important.
We'll, we'll get into there as soon as possible. How about that? All right. Uh, the review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals, uh, resolution review. There are 44 resolutions on for today. So I think folks are tidying up some things as we're coming, uh, into the last quarter of the year. Couple of resolutions of note. Uh, you know, we did all the proclamations, appreciate everybody coming out today so that we could recognize those folks. And, you know, this year we expanded our, uh, the folks that we had invited for our first responders day, and they were all very appreciative of that inclusion and said so as they were heading out. So I think that was, uh, very nice, uh, being able to include all of those folks there. Four resolutions on for ARP funding, as I'd mentioned previously. Um, just adjusting the purpose for one, moving it from, um, from, uh, oh gosh. No, sorry. Uh, scanning two printers for the Auditor's Office. I couldn't think of what the previous purpose was. Uh, and then, uh, we are adding a public safety software maintenance fees, uh, which is for the dispatching software with the Sheriff's Office. Pleasantville Water Project, we did have to adjust on what was appropriated for them. And then recategorizing a broadband project, um, from traditional ARP to revenue loss just for reporting purposes. We also have a resolution authorizing appropriating funds to the Fairfield County Board of Elections. This is for the August 8th special election that had taken place. Um, as I said, multiple financial resolutions allowing agencies to appropriate from unappropriate in their funds and for allowing for advance for operational needs and also repayment of advances. We also have a resolution approving a development agreement between Fairfield County and R E S Canal Winchester 1 LLC, and that's with RPC. Uh, Rick, Holly, either of you want to add anything to that?
That's our standard. Notice all the private improvements already started. Public improvements are going to start soon. Uh, Prosecutor's Office.
Perfect. I know Rick is joining us online today. Rick, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I would just say that, uh, if you, uh, sorry, there we go. Um, if you drive past on, uh, 33, um, up toward Canal Winchester, you can see the walls being put up at DHL. So it's, uh, going to be the largest building, um, in the county. So it's pretty impressive. So it's, uh, they're moving up quickly with the goal to be open, uh, next summer with 200 plus employees.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Holly. And lots of people have been , uh, working to make this project successful. We also have a resolution on to apply for funding allocation, uh, for agricultural easements through the Ohio Department of Agricultural Clean Ohio Local Agricultural Easement Purchase Program. This is just the application process there. And then lastly, a resolution authorizing the subordination of a fiscal year 2004 Community Housing Improvement Program mortgage there. Um, and that was put forth by Community Action. Bart, Budget Review.
I just want to thank everybody for their continued, uh, communications over the last few weeks as we move towards the budget hearing. Getting, we're getting closer and closer every day.
Thank you and to everyone for their work on, uh, making that as seamless as possible. Rochelle, Calendar Review and Invitations Received, please.
The South Licking Watershed Conservancy District will hold their regular meeting today at 6:00 p.m. at the Heber Municipal Complex. Ohio University is hosting a community engagement symposium on September 29th at 11:30 a.m. at the Ohio University End and Conference Center in Athens. Warpe C is hosting a 2023 Summit on Sustainability on October 26th at the Hilton Downtown Columbus. Two saving dates were received for 4 age participants for the Fairfield County Junior Fair Livestock Sale on October 12th and October 13th at the Feeder Creek Vet Show Arena at the Fairfield County Fairgrounds. For correspondence, letters were received from Fairfield County residents regarding solar energy. A letter was re- was received from Fairfield Homes regarding the Hunter's Hill Apartments. Dr. Carrie Brown, County Auditor, sent a memo on September 21st with the following subjects: County Appraised Valuations Over Time, R E A Summit, Internal Controls, and 70 Under 70 Plan. Auditor Brown sent her wins of the week. The Commissioner's Office received a letter from the Fairfield County Transportation Improvement District on September 20th regarding Basel Western Road Realignment Winding Project. A thank you note from Auditor Brown to Commissioner Levacy for support of R E A Summit on September 21st. And presentation reports from the September 20th Fairfield 33 Development Alliance Board meeting are also included in the packet. And that is it.
All right. Thanks, Rochelle.
So, uh, as noted, in Counter Review, uh, Ohio University, uh, Symposium on September 29th. Rick and I will be attending that. I understand we're going to receive a word from Ohio University or the Workforce Center. So Rick, I know you can hear me. Good, good work. Keep up the good work. And I'll look forward to riding to Athens with you Friday. Ready?
Yep. Road tripping.
So under old business, I, I have any, nothing, Commissioner Fix?
I just wanted to, um, speak for a moment about the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Um, you know, we, we got a tremendous amount of feedback at a recent public meeting and have, uh, decided to take a little bit of a step back and spend more time on it. Um, today I'll be reaching out to the townships and villages to schedule time with each of them individually to try to, uh, sync up with what their thoughts are, uh, so that when we end up, uh, at the end of the day, probably, you know, early next year, uh, with a comprehensive plan, it'll be one that everybody can feel comfortable. They've had full opportunity to participate in and that we're all, uh, at least close to being on the same page. So, um, I appreciate the feedback we're getting. Um, I think there is an opportunity for us, for me, to communicate more effectively, uh, what we're trying to do and why we're trying to do it and the benefits to all who participate. Um, and we need to, to, you know, work really hard on that between now and the end of the year to make sure that there are no further misunderstandings as to why we're doing what we're doing.
Very, very well put. Uh, under new business, I have nothing. Thank you.
No, no, nor do I. Thank you.
Very good. Jim Bonson.
President.
Yeah. So I, I received a thank you note from, uh, Dr. Carrie Brown. I assume you did as well.
I did also.
I was very nice, Dr. Brown.
Yes, I did. Um, the county Treasurers, we have two meetings a year, one in the spring and one in the fall. And the state has set up into four quadrants. We obviously are in the southeast quadrant and which also, to me, kind of surprisingly includes Franklin County. We try to get the, the sec-, the quadrants to get together once in a while and have a meeting. So with that in mind, I'm hosting a meeting this Thursday, uh, for the folks in southeast Ohio. And someone's trying to call me. And, um, we're going to have it at the Workforce Center. I said, you know, what's a great place. We had so much good feedback on the Workforce Center. So, uh, Rick's graciously gonna, uh, go ahead and give us a tour and we're gonna have lunch there. And then from there, we're gonna travel to Rock Mill, the 1824 Mill, and they're gonna open it up for us. And with the rain tomorrow and possibly Thursday, they may be able to, as they call it, water up the wheel. So we'll see what happens there. But, uh, also, uh, Brooke Philman from Treasurer Sprague's office is going to join us also. So it should be a really, really nice event. And once again, Rick, we look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
You just, uh, reminded me of something there, Treasurer, um, with, um, the Fairfield Center, um, in addition to the Workforce Center as meeting spaces. So John, um, Coaches and his team have done a great job getting the Fairfield Center up and running. If you need a conference space in that area, it is on FMX now and you can request that. Um, and it's quite a nice space. Um, there will eventually be, uh, more than this one that is currently available that people can access. So thanks, John and the team. He's joining us virtually as well. He's had a training.
Cheesy photo up there of him. John, where did you get that picture? It looks really good.
I don't know. Let me give them permission.
We don't often do that for John.
How's that?
Oh, that's, that's better. That's a John.
Thank you. We're real excited to, uh, have more folks visit the Fairfield Center. We've really been working hard, uh, getting it ready for visitors and it is ready to go, uh, in those conferences.
Thank you, John.
Sheriff Wayne.
On the topic of the Fairfield Center, our, uh, staff members currently there Monday through Friday, eight to four. We commence doing background checks from that location and working with John and his folks to get access for releasing the door. And I know we're still working towards the, uh, being able to badge in and out of the building and through the building. So it's coming along. Um, and hopefully, uh, that, uh, demand will pick up at that location. Uh, I think she's been there since, uh, Labor Day weekend, just after that. So, um, ready to publicly push out the information that services available there. I'll see what that demand looks like. Other than that, there's really nothing else to report. Been, been working with, uh, Mr. Hampson on, uh, budget things and my folks and getting our, uh, things ready for our October 10th meeting. So, uh, Sheriff, um, I understand that Luke Bryan concert went off pretty well. Well, it went off. Um, I know a lot of county residents are not fans of how the roadways were being configured to accommodate that. And, um, we had, uh, I think there was right in the neighborhood of 29, uh, charges filed, arrests made. So some of it was site and release, kind of alcohol related issues. So there were 20,000 people there. And it took three hours for the last car to get off the lot at the end of it. But. Oh, you know, it was such a big event. And at the end of the day, you guys did a great job. So. Well, and it really is a collaborative thing that we end up, the demand that we have, we end up reaching out to our neighboring counties to have them come and send that. So it's a, takes a lot of staff to staff that. Lisa, second opportunity to talk.
Again, thank you for, uh, the recognition today. Uh, my staff was very excited to receive that recognition. They do work very hard. Also, uh, just wanted to say thank you to Auditor Brown. Um, the real estate summit was very well received. I had some questions and comments afterwards, um, regarding our portion of it. And I think, um, some of the things that were addressed kind of gave, um, the folks some insight as to the tools that they do have available to them. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Dr. Brown?
Thank you to Lisa for being there. Thank you, Commissioner Levacy. Thanks to Jim and others who were there to speak. It was a very good event. We had a hundred percent positive feedback. Um, the one thing they wanted was a little bit longer session. They wanted a full day session. They also wanted to perhaps have one in the Purgatory area. So maybe we can do that. I don't, I don't know that we'll be able to pull off a full day session. For every hour that you spend, uh, for the continuing education, you're spending about four hours preparing for that. So that would be a little bit more difficult to handle with just the few folks that we have, um, doing that particular effort. But it was very well received as an inaugural event. We'll have more. Um, also had the opportunity last week to prepare a presentation for the Multi-County Juvenile Detention Center. Very rewarding and very encouraging. Encourage others to take that opportunity if they have a chance to do so. We spoke on creative and critical thinking and started out with just the students. And as they got a little bit louder, the staff came in and it was the, the whole, um, gym was filled. And that was a very good presentation. And it is much out of that as you give. And the same is true of the prison program. You've heard me talk about that volunteer program. The graduation was this weekend. And it was Saturday at the Marysville, um, prison. Very good event. We've been asked to go into the men's prison next and do this particular program as well. And we'll work on that. I, I know that it's a big undertaking.
Thank you for all you do. And thank you for inviting Jim and I, uh, to your.
It was a great kickoff.
It was. It was great. I enjoyed it. So, uh, if, uh, we're, and if there's nothing else, uh, we'll move into our regular voting portion until we stay down here. So rise if you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am one of the ladies, Susan Black, of the United States of America, and to the public, for the purposes of this, I'm not a nation, I'm not a god, and I'm a person with liberation, protestant, and.
Rochelle, any announcements?
There are no announcements.
Okay. Approval amounts for September 19th, 2023.
Samud.
Second. Any discussion? Call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Minutes passed two zero. From the Commissioner's Office, Resolution 2023 dash nine dot 26 dot A, a resolution authorizing the approval of proclamations.
Commissioners, I move items A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Second. Discussion? Same number. Roll call please.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. From the Fairfield County Board of Elections, Resolution 2023 dash nine dot 26 dot G, a resolution to authorize funding made available to Fairfield County Board of Elections for costs incurred in conducting the August 8th, 2023 special election as appropriated by House Bill 33 at the 135th General Assembly and appropriate from unappropriate.
Samud. Second. Discussion?
Same number. Roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. From the Fairfield County Court of Common Police, Resolution 2023 dash nine dot 26 dot H, a resolution authorizing acceptance of the Community Corrections Grant Agreement in Tendum with the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections for State Fiscal Years 2023 and 2024.
Samud. Second. Discussion?
Uh, so this adjusted updated agreement to the grant. They decided to give us $18,000 more dollars.
And you didn't say no, right?
Can't be that, everybody.
Well, thank you.
Good to see you, Brian.
Anything? Any, uh, additional, uh, discussion? Roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Motion pass two zero. From Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, Resolution 2023 dash nine dot 26 dot I, a resolution authorizing extending the repayment date of Vance of Fund 2881 EB Charging Station.
From Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, I move items I. Under Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, I move items I and J.
Second. Discussion?
Can we talk about that charging station?
Please.
Rick, you up there?
Yep.
Your favorite topic.
Charging station is up and working. We are still working on our service contract with them, negotiating a, trying to get a deal from them based on the poor service we have got from them. So we are unable to get the grant funds until that is completed.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Seeing done. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 2:0. For Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency, Resolution 2023-9.26.K. A resolution to approve a memo expenditure for EMA Fund 2091.
No EMA. New Resolutions K and L.
Second. Discussion?
Garrett Blevins is here in John's absence. Anything you want to add, Garrett?
Just the main one is just the LEPC giving us funding to do their administrative duty.
Thank you.
Additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 2:0. With Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution 2023-9.26.M. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category, County Engineer Fund 2024 Motor Vehicle for Materials and Supplies.
Under Fairfield County Engineer, I move items M, N, O, P, Q, and R.
Second. Any discussion?
I did not hear anything from Jeremiah or Jason on this.
The additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 2:0. From Fairfield County Family and Children First Council, Resolution 2023-9.26.S. A resolution to amend the certificate, update receipt line items, and request appropriations for Fund 7521, Fund 8160.
All right, I'm working up to this. Under Fairfield County Family and Children First Council, I move items S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, Z, A, A, B, B, C, C, D, D, E, E, F, F, G, G, and H, H.
Second. Any discussion?
I think you all win the award. 16.
So I, listen, all kidding aside, I appreciate the effort that you're putting into getting this on track and getting things to where they're supposed to be done. So to both of you, thank you for all the effort.
Thank you. And I, and this is just part of the reason why I'm very appreciative of the partnership with JFS. So thank you very much, Josh, his team, for this. So thank you, Commissioners.
And thank you, Tiffany, for all you're doing as well.
Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 2:0. Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2023-9.26.II. A resolution to approve additional appropriations by appropriate from unappropriated into major expense object category Fund 2072 Children's Services Fund.
Under Fairfield County Job and Family Services, I move items I, I, J, J, and K, K.
Second. Discussion? Seeing done. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 2:0. Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, Resolution 2023-9.26.LL. A resolution approving an account-to-account transfer into a major expenditure object category Fund 2481 Juvenile Recovery Fund.
The Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, I move items LL and MM.
Second. Discussion? Seeing done. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 2:0. From Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution 2023-9.26.NN. A resolution to approve a development agreement between Fairfield County and RES Canal Winchester LLC.
Submoved.
Second. Discussion?
We talked about this one previously.
Okay. Additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 2:0. For Fairfield County Soil and Water Conservation District, Resolution 2023-9.26.OO. A resolution to apply for funding allocation to acquire agricultural easements through the Clean Ohio Local Agricultural Easement Purchase Program for Fairfield County, Ohio.
Submoved.
Second. Discussion? Seeing done. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 2:0. South Central Major Crimes Unit, Resolution 2023-9.26.PP. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in the 2023 DLEF Grape Fund 2830 SF 8288.
Submoved.
Second. Discussion? Seeing done. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion pass 2:0. From Lancaster Fairfield Community Action Agency, Resolution 2023-9.26.QQ. A resolution authorizing the subordination FY 2004 Community Housing Improvement Program for Alicia Steph.
Submoved.
Second. Discussion? Seeing done. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 2:0. Payment of Bills, Resolution 2023-9.26.RR. A resolution authorizing improved payments and invoices for departments that need board of commissioner approval.
Submoved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 2:0. The next regular meeting is scheduled for October 3rd at 9:00 a.m.
Is there any additional item that needs to come before the Board of Commissioners at this time? In promotion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye or adjourn.